Right, we'll start the policy committee, it is six thirty. Survey results. We can go over this after we, we can work on search and seizure right now. Not be open with everyone.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we did, this is an annual policy, correct?
Yeah.
Is this right? I thought we'd already been through this. Cause wasn't this?
Oh, I think the search and seizure, um, I remember quickly when you mentioned the, armed district safety special.
Yeah, we, we, we went back to just to add that because we have our, uh, uh, my experience exposed that. Oh, sorry. That's why I'm like, wait a minute, cause I remember the meeting with all the armed district safety specialists and sheriffs and everybody was here. So I would like to.
On the website. Oh, well, if you don't have to be a gentleman, um, in order to get the best, which we need to.
Right, there was a thing.
Your feedback? No.
No, no, no.
I haven't sent this out.
Oh, does most of the ones need to be added?
I sent this out to admin and some of our SROs for some feedback.
Okay.
It hasn't officially been out, but if there is another draft somewhere, I don't have it.
It's not in the folder?
Not yet.
Okay. Maybe, cause everybody was here. I mean.
Right, did you, right, you just talked about some protocols around law and you put a protocol together, but we never actually changed the policy.
Yeah, but it had to do with, um, whichever policy it was where we're taking the kids in and maybe it was questioning them.
I think it was, it was more rational.
I think it was like not interrogation, we didn't use.
It was used to say interrogation. No, I. Right.
You only have to have reasons, especially service, if you believe that they could be involved in a crime.
Okay.
Probable cause means that you're, it's, it's, it's because it's like fifty-one percent or more here. And you have the right, based on what you've learned, what you can make in the rest.
So the way that we have always kind of trained to do this is if, um, if you have, uh, knowledge that is brought to you that there's been some illegal activity, whether it's weapons on campus or drugs or alcohol, um, and, you know. We can't just. The other, um, reason we can search your, uh, person, um, is something.
Right, right.
In years.
Right.
That it possibly, it possibly something is going to be a person, it possibly has. I don't know.
Yeah, but thank you.
Absolute law.
The reasonable suspicion gives us, uh, the ability to take a look at situations and if something doesn't look right, see right, we can address it right away.
Uh huh.
I fear that putting more words into a policy kind of makes us more like law enforcement, that we gotta check several boxes. For example, one of the things that happens quite a bit that would be reasonable suspicion for me, you go into the bathroom and I've got four young people in one soul.
Profiting.
Right, that's, that's not right.
Right.
Uh, and so that's where we can actually bring in, uh, I, I talk to them a little bit and then sometimes that leads to, uh, the, the search of what they have on their persons. I do make phone calls to parents and I explain this policy, this policy is given to all our kids.
Okay.
First day of school.
Right.
And then when I talk to parents, I say that we need reasonable suspicion to search your kid, this is why we searched your kid. And I say, if you ever feel that we are abusing that power, I want you to call me on it right away. And I tell the kids that as well, and I have never been, uh, called by a parent being upset for searching their kid. Normally, when I talk to parents, you can search my kid whenever you want. Tell them, and, but we don't, we don't abuse it, I feel like we don't abuse it.
Right.
I've asked parents to call me on that if you feel that, and we've never been called on it. The way the policy is referring, so I do hear if we do put more stipulations, more, you, you can only search if it's this, 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 and this. I think that gives more room to have those parents questioned, while you didn't have that says it before. So that would be my fear of adding, like.
No, and I, I absolutely hear what you're saying, I just know that in today's.
This is the, oh, the, um, uh, something versus to you know that was the point, it's just for the school districts, um, for example, reasonable suspicion.
Okay, we'll see, and this falls in line with law enforcement, like, just said, cause it says, uh, the fourth amendment applies to searches carried out by school officials. But a school official may conduct a search of student, students' person under certain circumstances, specifically the juvenile or the health of the school official. They search, a student, a official has reasonable suspicion. So that, that was, right. But I mean, the whole, we can't stop, um, that's a lot of suspicious. So, yeah, I get that, and it's not that I'm saying we need to change this, it's just today's culture. I can see parents coming back with what it's meaning, you can't just do this. So, and I don't.
I, I just wanted to say that, that what we're in this culture, we have done, we are not being called out, how that might.
Okay, okay, and I haven't heard that there's been an abuse of this whatsoever. But I do know we have the armed district safety specialists and we have the SROs and, um, and we have administrations, so everybody has their.
Definitely, absolutely.
Hats to wear with their own specific guidelines that they have to adhere to.
And we don't include our, in our building, we do not include our SRO, County Sheriff, in that search. They are not a part of that one thing, because they've got it, I mean, they've got, there are rules that they have to go.
Precisely, does the ADSS?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, cause there are.
I think, cause we have, yes, and he is a publicly, I think, mentioned, who has a, who, who.
Okay. Okay.
Your argument, yeah.
But he's, he's, yeah, he's a.
Right, and he's an employee of district.
Yep, yep.
He's got a lot of enforcement agents, and so that looks different for us.
Yeah, absolutely, okay. All right, well, we'll move on, um, and see where this paragraph will lead to. The Board of Trustees of Lakeview School District, um, is committed to pro- providing students and employees with schools and workplaces that are free of drugs and weapons. To that end, the board prohibits the presence of drugs, controlled, um, substances, weapons of any type, explosive devices, alcohol, non-authorized medication, or any other intoxicant. As those terms are defined by state or federal law or district policy on district property or in any district sponsored event. This prohibition applies to employees, students, patrons, visitors, or any other person on district property. That's not cool. All persons are responsible for the security of any vehicle, locker, desk, bag, or other item they possess or bring onto district property or to district sponsored event. No person shall possess, place, keep, or maintain any article or material that is prohibited by law or district policy in items, lockers, or vehicle. Desks or bags assigned to them or under the control, their control on district property or district. So. In conjunction with other district security measures, a dog may be used to sniff the air around lockers, desks, bags, items, or vehicles that are on district property or at district sponsored. Dogs are low risk, it's a small suspicion, a dog is a suspicion, a dog is a suspicion, and a low risk dog. If the dog alerts that particular item or place the person having the use of, or wanting to, or responsible for that place or item, will be called to the scene to witness the inspection. Inspection shall be unannounced and maybe made at the discretion of the superintendent or superintendent. Okay, so our ADSSs don't have dogs, so this would be specific to police, police involvement.
So, yeah, and after police does, the dog, so they all, um, they all just, I don't know.
Okay.
Or animal services, it's about, it's about, it's about.
Okay.
The dog actually is going to school a lot, cause they, they don't, they don't have two years ago, they just went to social, it's, uh, it's lovely.
Okay.
Well, they're amazing logic. I, we have dogs come out, but not from a, uh, a point of, hey, we got something going on here, can we get a dog out here? That's always, we've always been contacted by law enforcement, uh, pre-service SRO has a dog, uh, and they come down time. But it's just nice for the kids and us to see a dog working at the school. It's great. But neat, I, I think that policy should stay in there for the U N, and that does happen, which periodically, but.
It's kind of used as a deterrent.
Yeah, absolutely.
We know that, right, right.
Yeah.
No, I think that's the best policy, in a term.
Yep.
Cause it can go off the parking lot, and so another candidate can bring something to the school, campus at all, anywhere, inside the school or outside the school.
I, can I clarify something, cause I did say something, I don't wanna, uh, come across as.
You're good.
Saying something that's not true. Uh, we have had our SRO, County Sheriff, conduct searches of vehicles in the parking lot when we, uh, have identified, uh, it could be a weapon.
Right.
The gun case.
Right.
So if they do conduct searches, just not anything on the person to the substance.
Okay.
I was just thinking, well, just said something that wasn't true, so we just.
Okay.
I'm on it.
Um, but I do think we need to clarify that this is a police dog, if it's, it's not a district's law, yeah.
Right.
T nine.
It isn't.
Cause, like, for instance, I'll give you an example, let's say a teacher comes up to the classroom, there's two kids by a locker, they don't notice the teacher. They're doing something that appears to be a hand-to-hand trash, uh, transaction, you don't see the money exchanged, you don't see the drugs exchanged. But one of the students looks and sees the teacher immediately, walk, shuts the sign to the locker, appears to put something in it quickly, and then both walk away. To me, that would be reasonable suspicion, because that is consistent with potentially a drug transaction, but you didn't see me. So in law enforcement, we could stop somebody, we could, this could have been, we don't know for a fact, it could have been, you know, a con, who knows whatever, and they didn't want to embarrass anyone. But we don't know that, but it doesn't change the fact that we have the time, we have, at that moment, we have time, we can legally stop them and say, hey, what were you doing? Open your locker, if you wanna see what you had in there, to verify if there was a con, that it was not a con. And so that's reasonable suspicion.
Then if you open the locker and you're hard-hearted, and you're probably.
That's, now, now you have probable cause, and you appear less, now your hunch, your belief was now, was accurate. If it wasn't, you say, okay, it wasn't that, and, you know, no harm, no foulness, but you can explain that, aren't you, searched, they did something that was consistent with potentially a crime. You searched and it turned out to be nothing.
And so this, we need to get back to the top, this definition says searches must be reasonably related to the circumstances and then not excessively intrusive, so. And that, that captures what you just said.
Yeah, it was reasonable that that's what potentially happened, you won't over assess it, because you have, right now, if you wanted to go out to the car, you wanted to go back to the house, that, those are all law. I'm just saying, you, that, that's where it becomes more intrusive and stuff, and you have to have a little bit more, maybe probable cause to start doing deeper searches, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we add, um, an alert may constitute reasonable suspicion or probable cause, and the canine officer will determine what constitutes an alert by the dog, that's just, uh, those things, but. Um, are you okay with adding that additional input, or do you want to?
It seems like, based on the fact that the dog is sniffing in alerts, that at that moment, it's just based on that air, you said, just reasonable suspicion. It's not until they actually do the search and find something that they go to probable cause, I think that's what you just said.
Can you just put something in the fact that we'll follow all legal and lawful law enforcement procedures? No, but with that, rather than get specific on what that is, to say, the law enforcement has to follow their protocols and procedures?
That would, well, um.
I think for this, because it's search and seizure, I would want it, I would want to dial it in as much as we can, without tying our hands.
I really think that reasonable suspicion, because the state that word reasonable suspicion is stated above for our, our doing, actually, we need to at least keep that word in there. There'll be a suspicion piece if you wanna add that in the law enforcement piece.
Well, I'm just saying law enforcement, cause it's dealing with a canine, and we don't have a dog, and we'll never have a dog, then that will all be pertaining, uh, pertaining with law enforcement there. Laws, policies, and procedures.
Just keep in mind that the public has, has a lot more latitude than law enforcement does, because law enforcement are trained in understanding what reasonable suspicion is. What consensual encounter is, what probable cause, so we're held to a higher standard. A person in the public is, so it's, it's usually, you are, it's reasonable, or reasonable of a person, of maybe the same training and experience. So, a, a young police, who just came on the police cap, and his understanding of reasonable suspicion of what he observes is gonna be different than a seasoned veteran. And they're gonna, that's what's gonna go to court, and that's what they're gonna test you for yourself, but you made a thousand, the rest, this guy's gonna do two. Your level of reasonable suspicion of probable cause is not at the level of this individual's. And so that's the same thing that applies to civilians, is that if you're a school teacher, you're around a lot of kids, they're gonna hold you to the standard of what is reasonable for you and your, and your other. A teacher that rounds you, not, you have to rise the level of a police officer, they're not gonna, cause you don't have the training and experience, so you can't. You're not gonna be able to justify a reasonable suspicion of probable cause at the same level, so that's what, so don't, don't try to compare the two. Uh, you know, that's, that's, that's what people kind of get confused about.
So, going back to what Josh just said, I think instead of conduct reasonable searches, they're authorized to conduct searches of school property and equipment, as well as of students and their personal effects, based on reasonable suspicion. Cause reasonable searches is, yeah.
That's, that's confusing.
That's a reasonable search, yeah.
It is.
What's that last, that, what, in court, they say, what's a reasonable search?
Right.
What's an unreasonable search?
Right.
Do you want to define reasonable suspicion in our school, that, um, searches must be reasonably related to the circumstances and not excessively intrusive? Or you just don't believe it?
Well, we could, uh, base some reasonable suspicion, uh, what was that?
Um, so the definition of reasonable suspicion, quote, to this, is searches must be reasonably related to the circumstances and not excessively intrusive.
If you did, then I might just make you a note, I might just put note, sorry, no.
We, we, the definition of.
Searches and.
On. Uh, must be, must be reasonably. Related. To the circumstances. And not excessively intrusive.
Or was that people are gonna be like, well, what is?
And, and intrusive.
Intrusively.
So, and maybe just based on reasonable suspicion, is it not, that you had asked about it?
Right, no, I, I agree, but this needs to, anyway. Um, okay, so, an alert may, or, we can take, so we can just go back to reasonable suspicion, take out probable cause? Okay, so, an alert constitutes. Reasonable suspicion. And the canine officer will determine what constitutes an alert by the dog. What's that? Go ahead.
Alert by the guy, uh, alert constitutes reasonable suspicion, you know, can you actually, what constitutes, and they're kind of, sort of be done.
It, yeah, an alert constitutes reasonable suspicion, period. Right, we can do that, um, I'm just, I, we need to fix this paragraph right here, because it's driving me nuts, but I'm trying not to be mean, so. Branching out.
This typically, what we have is kind of.
You're right, we will. Okay. Um, if the, yes, if the dog alerts on a particular item or place, so if the. Just call what it is. Alerts on a particular item or place, the person having the use of bringing onto district property or responsible for that place or item. Oh, that would seem, witness the inspection, okay, so. Particular item or place. What it's just saying is we're gonna call that person down, so, say that, so.
And associate the, you, the whole place. And it's the student, uh, this student, the. Could you say the person to, of these items could be attributed, and we call them and get rid of them? Uh, the person.
You could put the owner.
Take home the items or attributed, will be called to the scene to witness the inspection. The items are attributed. Oh, there you go.
I, I don't think we need all those other words. We'll be called to the scene to witness the inspection.
How about the previous sentence, I'm, I still, I'll kind of come up there, I think it's, it's really, um, it just, it's very, 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 I would say, something to the effect of, an alert which is determined by the canine handler constitutes reasonable suspicion. Which is determined by the canine handler.
Constitutes reasonable suspicion.
Yeah, okay. That last sentence, uh.
Unannounced.
All, it seems weird, because you're talking about calling that person down to witness the inspection, and now we're saying it's gonna be unannounced, but I think what they're saying is the canine may be used unannounced, that's what that is about.
Right.
Uh, it doesn't go with where it is right now.
Well, I don't, I don't know that it's relevant to state that it is unannounced, it's just. Well, I don't, I don't know that it's relevant to state that it is unannounced, it's just the reality, we, we use canine officers and, and their dogs, and that's it.
And I wouldn't even take that wrong, you don't need to keep saying law enforcement can, you already know that, and everybody knows it's gonna be law enforcement can, so, in that sentence, you just did what says, if the law enforcement canine alerts on particular, I'd say after the canine alerts on a particular item or place, a person or persons in questions. Because now, because of the sentence above, you're saying that he, the, the, the canine officer is gonna determine the alert and what that constitutes, so I'd say after the, the canine alert, cause now you're, that's, it's just continuing the process of what you're gonna do next.
Right, okay.
Cause it's, it's, you're already saying this, okay, we've already, you sn- either, you smell, that the canine came in.
Right.
It alerted on something, the canine handler says, yes, based on this, there is, there is reasonable suspicion to move forward, and then now you're saying after he's determined that, now you, as a school, that can call that student and do what you have to do.
Right, okay. Alright, so. An alert which is determined by the canine handlers. Constitutes reasonable suspicion, after the canine alerts on a particular item or place, the person or persons in question will be called to the scene to witness the inspection, period. In the event the dog alerts on a lock to be a golden owner, a person's bringing it in, on to the, or should ask about the inspection. Break this, okay.
This is if the, if the, if the, if the law, law enforcement are involved in a particular inspection.
Right, because it's an open, the item for inspection may result in referring the matter to law enforcement officials to secure, actually, I'm clear with that, when I did do suspension. For termination of employment for employees in suspicion or expulsion of students and loss of parking privileges on district property for students. Visitors or patrons may be banned from district property.
Okay, so, refusal of opening, um, maybe the law didn't, doesn't put any action in, and, and the law enforcement is involved. Yeah.
And they can move the other, to, to probable cause, and then they have a right to instruct that vehicle. If the vehicle was trained to own a certain law, the Supreme Court is, if the person said, you're not, they can.
Um, is there any way that we could move this sentence, this, this paragraph, it's a really important paragraph?
Which one?
Uh, the one that we're on right now?
Yeah.
This refusal. Um, I feel like there is, it could be assumed or interpreted that this is only implied that there's a dog involved with the location of it. I would love to have this toward the very, very top. You know, we, like, for example, big detectives go out, this happened twice this year, um, big detectives went off, um, we went and questioned the, the guy, the student out of class, and the kid just refused to cooperate and just bolted.
Okay.
And we were trying to, well, to me, I can say that he was refusing to be searched, and so I go to this policy, and it's like, oh, well, if there's no dog involved, can we still count this as refusing to be searched?
I think it has to be moved, because I think people learn how this is written, it's like, they're just putting that, I think we have to have a, you know, it's like, under the dog part, within a separate one, that just says, and you're gonna throw back to you, it will be referred to law enforcement at that point, like, what we originally have, but it probably shouldn't be moved, definitely. So that it's clear, like, this would be actually when a dog's involved, and this is when it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, like, it, if in that case, it would, it'd be really nice to be able to feel very confident that, that a kid just bolts out of the school, I mean, I can't talk to the kid, I can't.
Right.
They're gone, we contact parents, you know, they're like, hey, Billy just took off. Um, but at that point, it'd be nice to make sure that we're able to give consequences. Um, you know, law enforcement's gonna do their thing, but as far as schools, they'll be able to go through a five-day, the absolute suspension, or whatever we did, whatever we decide. And what's scary to me with that is, you know, we don't know, they're, they're taking off, we don't know what they were afraid of, if.
Why, is there a gun?
Whether they, or was it something way more serious?
The wording like a refusal for reasonable search is an offense of guilt?
Refusal to participate in it.
No.
Well, and I, though I think I hear what Dustin's saying.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that if we were to move this paragraph to the top, and kind of address searches in general first, and then move into the dog part of it, if you start with the dog, then it kind of becomes the focus of doing a search with a dog. Where in reality, most of our searches don't happen with a dog, but we start the process, talking about dogs, and since it kind of roots down.
Well, it's kind of, this paragraph does give you kind of a broad overview, but then the first detailed one is specific to a dog, so I think it should just be, cause since you kind of have a, a few different approaches, if the dog's involved or if not, you know, maybe, cause when a dog's involved, it's not automatic, law enforcement starts to call persons. If, if, otherwise.
So, actually, people, like, they, right.
Right after this one, yeah. Order and security in the school.
In general, there's some things suspicious happening.
Right.
A search may have, it might have involved a dog, and if we look for detail, it might have involved a dog.
Yeah.
Is that right, Deb?
So what's the, the school's policy on that, if a student does that, like, takes off? And you believe that they're involved in something, it's just, their, their behavior is very, um, consistent with criminal activity, maybe, like, can you, are you allowed to go check the, the locker without them being present? Not, I don't know.
Or the lockers, how?
Ah, yeah, that's what I figured, I mean, that's the same thing when I was at L P D, if they thought something, maybe, the internal affairs would come in, they would, they didn't, you didn't have to, they'd go check it. And it was all video, TV, good stuff, until you did it, they didn't, it was their problem, they'd say.
But I think it's happened probably three or four times, where it's been a student. So she was suspicious, and they bolted, and they, like, uh, the car came on, and, and so it's not, it's no longer ours, and so, I mean, really, they'll be forced, if you're trying to call law enforcement, call parents, and then you're trying to, like, but then it's, eventually get those weekly searches, but you really don't have to, like, you know, the kid just say whatever, and he was really in the political position at that point, or when the search happened, or when they, or when the.
That's a big one, like, if, if you're alone, you.
Please.
He didn't have, uh, he was like that.
One time, law enforcement wasn't doing anything. And so, yeah, you're Friday, that was, that's it, right? We're seeing the worst, Friday night.
So, is it in the liability of, you have a kid, uh, option to. Is it intoxicating, or is it intoxicant?
Intoxicant.
It's not. So, um. Change this paragraph to, which, this was the first one, so I moved to below that. Order and security of the school shall be maintained by school authorities, and school authorities are authorized to conduct searches of school property and equipment, and students and their personal effects, based on reasonable suspicion. Searches must be reasonably related to the circumstances and not excessively intrusive. Um, right. All persons are responsible for the security of any vehicle, locker, desk, bag, or other item they possess or bring onto dis- district property or to a district-sponsored event. No person shall possess, place, keep, or maintain any article or material that is prohibited by law or district policy, and items, lockers, vehicles, desks, bags assigned to them, or under their control while on district property. Or at a district event. Refusal to. Operate with a, uh, search may result in disciplinary action, including, but not limited to. Uh, suspicion or termination of employment, or suspicion?
Suspension.
Oh, thank you, I can't read either. Suspension, or termination of employment for employees, and suspension or expulsion for students and loss of parking privileges on district property for students. You like those transitional words?
I would not research papers out there, I'm even. But I'm not a teacher, so.
Visitors or patrons may be banned from district property, okay. Dustin, is this a better spot for the paragraph, and does it read better? Refusal to cooperate with a search may result in disciplinary action, including, but not limited to, suspension or termination of employment or employees in suspension or expulsion of, for students, as well as loss of parking privileges on district property for students. Okay, sure.
Can I ask you a question, a couple of paragraphs, excessive, intrusive, this is my last one.
You're good.
Last.
That would be my only, what, what does that tell, and I don't like wording policies, uh, but what's intrusive, cause I'm gonna leave that end of the law here.
Right, we're not touching kids, we're not asking them to do this.
Absolutely, so that, the, couple of parag- couple of paragraphs, uh.
Uh, definition.
Is, are you okay with taking this shirt off?
Reasonably, yeah.
Oh. Yeah, the excessively intrusive came from the.
The wording on that.
The thingy, and we can figure out what we wanted to say.
Yep, perfect.
Okay. So, I changed this header to school property, equipment, and personal effects, because this is, Dustin.
That's there by students.
Does it, because what was all in it? So, for health and safety reasons, a general inspection of school properties such as lockers and desks may be conducted on a regular basis or when reasonable suspicion reveals that the search will disclose evidence of illegal possession or activity. Illegal possession, um.
Illegal possession, contraband, criminal activity, or, or, I would say, illegal possession, contraband, possess, contraband.
Well, we also, when searches, completely, like, law enforcement, stolen.
Well, that's why I say, illegal possession, I mean, talking drugs, stolen items.
Yeah, contraband, yeah, that's, that's, contraband can be drugs, it could be cars, it could be.
Anything.
Stolen property, yeah, it could, it's, it's, we would say.
I think it's fun for me.
Ban, it'd be a, uh.
Okay, though. Um, any items contained in a locker shall be considered to be the property of the student to whom the locker was assigned. Notice of this policy shall be given to all students, school authorities may inspect and search school property and whether it owned or controlled by the school, such as lockers, desks, and parking lots, as well as personal effects left to bear by students without notice or consent of the student. This applies to student vehicles parked on school property. Building principals may require each high school student to return the privilege of parking on school property to consent in writing to school searches of his or her vehicle or personal effects therein, when reasonable suspicion of wrongdoing exists. Okay, do we do that?
Can I ask you a question, if we do have that, why would we may require them to sign the law?
I don't know, I don't know if we do this.
I'm, I'm gonna, do you guys in your parking policy?
I was just saying, when the kids get to go out, for, for their parking permit, is that for their parking?
I don't know.
Cause I don't know that I've ever read one.
I just signed it.
Well, I was, you know, like, through our front office sales, cause they do pay it for, and I don't get it, so.
I don't have it, that's stupid, so I don't.
These are ours, before, that year.
No, what this is saying.
No. They don't rent them cars.
They know what, but we can search.
Or it's.
It's definitely in our handbook.
Policy.
It's in the policy, it's in our handbook, but we don't have it signed, so.
Right, so what is the student, uh, I don't know what the application is for the student.
I think, I think to make this sound more legal, it says, for health and safety reasons, a general inspection of school properties such as the lockers and desks may be conducted on a regular basis or when reasonable, what was it, uh, on a regular basis, or when reasonable suspicion suggests, not reveals, because we haven't revealed it, you, cause you're still, reasonable suspicion, you're, you're searching for something, you're not sure.
Right.
Suggests that the search will disclose evidence of illegal possession, or contraband, or criminal activity. Cause activity, activity is vague.
You want criminal.
Yeah, cause you have to see, cause that's what you're looking, you believe you're, you're gonna locate some type of criminal activity or, or contraband. If you just put activity.
Yeah, you're starting to.
And put activity, cause it, what if, or your, or, or activity, what activity are you speaking about?
Right.
You have to define what activity you're thinking about, or criminal, cause that's what you're thinking, you have reasonable suspicion to the prime, or you're gonna find some form of, uh, contraband, or theft, or something.
Right.
And which all, are all criminal, in nature.
Right.
The activity could be, like, a, this, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that would be part of contraband, criminal activity, it could be anything, but, if you just put activity.
What would you find in a desk that would be evidence of criminal activity that isn't contraband?
Well, they're, they're synonymous, basically, they're the same.
Okay, that's, that's right, that's.
But, but yeah, but otherwise, you could just, or you just leave it at possession of contraband, period.
Well, criminal activity would be destruction of the property, so if they were carding on the desk, and they cart, like, uh, it, well, yeah, or you know, hate words, or stuff like that, to me, that would be a criminal activity, but I could be mistaken.
But if you had just activity, that would just say, well, what activity you're talking about.
No, that part I get, I tried that, I'm sure.
So, any items contained in a locker shall be considered to be the property of the student to whom the locker was assigned. Notice of this policy shall be given to all students.
Just bang one.
Whoa.
Good, right, of what it's, there's an, or, and, you know, this policy is.
So, notice of the policy is given to students' hand book. Okay, do we say that, or do we just say it's given to them annually, and you'll tell them?
The issue of doing that, eh, like, we give that to them annually during the first day. I don't want like, the, it was in school, so we want, we have teachers go through this policy with. If that's fine, we're compliant with this policy, uh, if, if we didn't do that, this is a laws and handbook, this is a, so there's, there's. In the, in the handbook, or on our?
On their handbook.
Oh, it is.
Alright, so notice of this policy shall be provided to all students through their student handbook.
Are they required to, are they required to have, to, 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 like, uh, is a kid, the kids of life, and then, and then, uh, to, to assign someone, and then turn it back? When I talk to college, when I talk to college, we made students.
Right.
We, we made them review it, and they had to sign, say, and review, like, if they chew, if, if you need to.
This is requires a student signature.
Okay.
No, we're talking, that's different.
This policy, is there some accountability that we have to enforce this policy? Because we know that we know that the student and hopefully their parents have read this.
So, do you, does likely require teachers to read, to specifically read through this policy? Is it all going through that handbook? Because it sounds like that's what Timberlake does, but this is not a required policy.
So then, it can, for, shall be provided to and the five.
We don't have it signed, but it is one of the parts.
Okay, how are we getting it against the parents?
I wonder if it's a little bit gray or though, because it was like all students, on like, a student starts to mix up the first day, and you get another, I mean, it could be a student who can't
They get the handbook.
This is the other thing, is this in the elementary handbooks as well? But, okay, but we're not verifying that parents are able to.
When my girls were in school, like in high school.
So that we know that we know that we have done everything we're powered to make everybody aware of. Alright. Any items Okay, now. Athletics?
Well, my school has, and it, yes, it is, it's optional for kids now. Well, I would say, yeah, like a third of our students maybe.
We don't have that, but it's optional.
Yeah, it's optional, three.
Because I know middle doesn't at Timberlake, but I don't know that like there's no. Okay, okay. School authorities may inspect and search school property and equipment owned and controlled by the school. Such as. But if we're saying a school property, then we have to say it's under control by the school. School property, but don't let them control that school.
Right, so just saying twice and saying that.
The, the such as where here's an example of one of the desks. Chromebooks be added on that.
Okay, but here's, I think because we're, let's be consistent throughout the language. Basically, any items contained in a locker, a desk, can I say Chromebooks?
No, no, that was a sentence ahead of you.
Oh, okay.
Gone through school property, but all the control.
Shall be considered to be the property of the student to the, to the student. Do we need that too when it was designed? School authorities may inspect and search.
For anybody, the first student that they had in a locker, desk, or their school property.
Or.
Would it be the, shall be considered to be the property of the student?
Well, the car and the students.
Well, the, where I think that was going with is you search a locker and little Johnny says, oh, that's not mine, that's Suzie's, so he can't get it. So this policy is saying, oh, no, you're responsible for everything, your car, your locker.
Do, okay, right, but do we still make any students share lockers? Because I know when my kids were in school, they had to share lockers, which created a big old problem when someone stuck that's the whole.
Share a locker, no.
No, nobody can touch a locker, you can't use a locker, there's issues there, they, a lot of kids don't use the lockers, they just leave stuff out of the locker. It's something I have a little, like, maybe I have a locker, we need to get you one, and every time I talk to the kids, they have plenty of lockers to be had.
Okay. So, the, what I'm hearing you say, we don't share them anymore?
Well, I do know that there are more kids who leave one locker. And they're selected for assigned to one kid.
Right.
But there are, there's some, I know there's a couple of girls, that three year old that puts stuff in that locker.
But respectfully, that's their choice. If one person, yeah.
And they're responsible for what's in that locker.
Right.
No, but the, the policy is saying so if it is assigned to Shannon. Shannon is signing off that everything in the locker is my responsibility, accountable for it. So she can't punt it off on Dustin, importantly, for anybody, isn't it?
Right, because we don't assign two kids, that's the problem, we assign two kids to leave one locker. But that would be the same as a car, or you don't need to do I rent you, and you left your stuff in there, but I would be in my car, behind his.
With that, that's a, that's a problem. With that said, if, let's just say, they stay at a certain Jason's locker. I buy a baby in there. He says Billy's, I talked to Billy, Billy owns it a hundred percent, held it for a hundred percent my day. Josh can get it all, it's in there. Are we gonna hammer Josh for it?
But I do think this did, I do think that's a great learning lesson.
So, school authorities may inspect and search school property, so require my school property and equipment owned or controlled by the school. That's the part to me that is, so it should just be school authorities may inspect and search school property. Because if it's school property, it's owned or controlled by the school. I don't understand why that is there, to identify it's not my school property. Okay, so I think this has to be broken apart differently. In the sense that I think at first should state, school authorities may inspect and search school property and equipment. Then, we need to say this. Yes. Any item contained in a locker, desk, or district parking lot shall be considered to be the property of the student. So, school authorities may inspect and search school property and equipment as well as personal effects left by students without notice or consent of the student. Any items contained in a locker, desk, or in a district parking lot shall be considered to be the property of the student.
When you read that, which student? No, I'm thinking specifically of a locker, shall be considered to be the property of the student.
To whom they were assigned.
No, we shouldn't put these out. So, I just don't know, it's usually about a lot. I mean, it doesn't happen a lot, but frequently if you find something in a locker, oh, that wasn't mine. So, if something's there, stop in my locker, because they don't have their own location, so whatever. They, or something, so the locker is just to respect that.
But then we have to go back to just locker, because we don't start, well, I mean, I guess desks are assigned to some degree. And I don't know, we're still assigning for these thoughts, I know. You guys did the senior.
Yeah.
That's cute.
That's cute.
You made that.
It, it just, it has been seen by the student. Drinks. Good, but any items contained inside the locker, desk, or some sort of property that that student, that student, that student. Yeah, the part is good, you should have. Yeah, because it adds a little bit of content. Because in the event that they choose to share lockers, what's going on?
Right. Students choose to share lockers.
So, you don't say, because now you're trying to check the locker, it goes into the desk, I mean, how do you open a closed desk? It was, or to
But this is the, but desk is all assigned.
Right here, we're putting this.
And I find out that it's all classes, I find different people sitting in the same desk. This is specific to.
There is no, a lot of, I don't know, it just sounds like we're saying we also have it for our.
Okay, so all persons responsible for tearing their vehicle locker down. No person shall possess or place. Well.
It has been designed to them or under control.
Well, because this is just sort of a, we're talking about searches and seizures. Searchers, seizures. And then we're moving down into now we're talking about school property, equipment, and personal effects.
Instead of saying, you could say personal effects, and we change that the language a little bit.
Okay, so property equipment as well as personal effects by students without notice or consent of the student. Any items contained in a locker, desk, or in a district parking lot shall be considered to be the property of the assigned student. And are subject to, oh, I don't think we need that, because we're just ignoring some of that. Because we're saying already that it's subject. This applies to student vehicles parked on school property. Building principals may require each high school student to return for the privilege of parking on school property to consent in writing to school searches. So. Another school property and equipment for illegal drugs, weapons, or other. Illegal for dangerous substances, orbitariums, illegal searches conducted through the use of especially trained dogs.
So, do you have any others?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, dogs, that's next.
No, we, well, you're right, okay, but we did, yeah, oh, that was the refusal, there we go, okay. Alright, so, alright, so, um.
Call me and let me know if they're requesting assistance, but they're the ones who actually request it.
I'd definitely call you.
But you're the ones who are returning.
Absolutely.
Yeah, not me.
But it's more, right, I'm, I'm looking for you to give me the go ahead.
Right.
Is that my search?
Yeah. We saw, we saw you go in the search. I'll be damned, that's very specific.
Oh, sweet.
And then, and then with materials.
We would still, on our end, if we were gonna charge something, we still would have to, we could seize the phone, we would still have to write a warrant for it. Or we'd use, for the, for, let's say, I know, the same example, I know, we'd say, well, she sent that, she shows that picture on her phone. We see it's his phone, which that's, like, we want to arrest him. We would have rights to it based on the fact that she's given us the evidence, but nobody would be on this phone, we would not send it on. Because we're probably gonna find what? That's what.
Why would you say continue on, say?
Yeah. Would you charge you for something? Yeah.
I will show you, I will show you, I will see her, long, long.
Two words, wait. It's okay.
There is evidence of violation, but this would possibly.
That person, sure.
Yeah.
Order insecurity in schools, having containment of school authorities. You have an English background? So, you have an English background?
No, I, I don't have to ask you.
Probably need to get in and add in lockers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I just need to know, kind of, as far as next time, so we can, next session. Give me.
What?
So, we have turkey here.
Sorry, we have our own. Yeah. Yes.
We will work on this again with number five, and we're gonna add in, um, wands and stuff, so we want some.
With that, I don't know what policies, I, I don't mind, like, because I know that you source a lot more freedom.